All right, good evening and welcome. I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you would please first join us as some student guests lead us in our pledge of allegiance in moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so first up we have the consent agenda items. Is there an approval? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Shirley.
I'll second that.
Sinead's second and all that approve. Thank you. And then the financial reports were provided for your review. First up we have the information only.
In your packets aboard you do have your school reports that are available for review. Just as a reminder to our community along with our board, that this year we have our strongest enrollment and we continue to have students enrolling every week. We have multiple scheduled activities across kindergarten through 12th grade. And our teachers are engaged in ongoing professional learning as we're working to meet our five-year strategic goals, specifically in math and reading. So we're very excited that it's been a very busy beginning of the school year, but we're getting back to what we expect school to be. So we're very pleased with how that's looking and all that information is in our reports.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, first an update on our health status. For those that are interested, the Department of Public Health will host a school and community-wide vaccine clinic. They will use the school clinic here at the middle school, high school. That will be on September the 22nd. They will do that from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock. Again, that is open to anyone who is eligible and it is available for your convenience. Students, faculty, any adults. So again, we just have that available for ease for those who choose that option. In addition to the vaccine clinic, I do want to share that between August the 27th and September the 30th, we did see a nearly a 40% increase in our positive cases. But we are very pleased to share that since our September 10th report, we've had more than a 35% decrease in positive cases. So with our continued mitigation strategies, we're doing the face coverings, we have our continued hand washing stations. We're doing staggered schedules in the hall. Along with the additional data from the state and the Department of Public Health, I had a conversation with them today. We do believe that we are slowly reaching the peak of the spike of the Delta variant. We're very pleased that our schools have been able to operate strong in person. We have over 90% of our students attending in person. So I want to thank our parents, our community, our teachers and our board for allowing us to have that option so our students can be educated face-to-face with their teachers. We are very pleased that we were able to reopen the virtual learning application because we know that some parents need that option and we want to make sure that that is available. We know at the beginning of the year we had closed it right before school started, but we have reopened it. Since it's been reopened across kindergarten through 12th grade, we've had 13 new students enroll in that option. And at this time, we have less than 10% of our kindergarten through 12th grade students attending virtually. But we will continue to make that option available for families who so choose it. Moving from our health status, regardless of the format of instruction, we know that education is critical to the future success of our students. We know that our system provides rigorous, engaging instruction. But to benefit from this, we know it's imperative that students are participating, they're engaged, and that means that they're attending. So you have to be present whether virtually or in person to benefit from what school offers. This is a central belief that we as educators hold, but we also know that it's state law, that there's mandatory attendance. And this month, the month of September, is recognized as School Attendance Awareness Month. And I'm going to, before I introduce our team to go over some activities and some belief statements, I want to just highlight a summary of the Chattahoochee County proclamation about Attendance Awareness Month. And it says, "As superintendent, our district, we hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, thrive academically, emotionally, and socially." So again, for us, it is so imperative that students are attending school and working with their teachers. So I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Echols, our school's social worker. She is serving our system K-12 and she has brought a team of wraparound support services with her so that we can highlight the importance of daily attendance.
Greetings everyone and thank you Dr. Brooks and the board for allowing us to share this opportunity with you. I did bring someone with me. I brought the team. At this time, this is Mr. Gordon Floyd, who is the magistrate judge of this particular county and doing an excellent job. And next to him are wonderful students that represented here tonight. Also, we have our court-appointed truancy intervention project team members. Would you all please stand? Ms. Broadwater, at large, member from Columbus, Ms. Bobby from Chattahoochee County, and also Ms. Ellison, who is the court-appointed chairperson. Thank you so much for what you do to make it happen here in Chattahoochee County. As Dr. Brooks said, we have to make sure that school attendance is important because it's a Georgia law. So how do you implement that? You implement that by bringing everybody on board, not just the parents, not just the students. You involve the community. And I must say to you, for the last three years, Chattahoochee County has truly led so well. They have led the way to make sure that attendance is available for everybody. One word I heard Dr. Brooks mention was equity. That's services for everybody. If they cannot be here at school, guess what? We have a plan. It's called virtual learning and we can do that. Who can tell the story better? A student can tell the story better. So right now, I'm going to introduce Chloe to come over next to me and to share with you.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Jones and we are excited to join other students across the country in students' attendance campaigns. Even in the middle of a pandemic, it is important to us for students to come to school. Each day we miss of school, it is like missing an opportunity in life. Now, I would like to present a few posters made by my class.
Hi, I'm Arizona and I'm in the sixth grade and my poster is about, if you don't come to school, you won't get anywhere in life.
Hi, my name is Hannah and I'm in sixth grade and my poster is about, if you work hard and go to school, you can do anything wonderful.
Hi, my name is Sophia Tash and I'm also in the sixth grade and my poster is about, if you go to school, you can be successful in life.
My name is Chloe and my poster is about attendance matters. When you come to school, it is an opportunity in life to have goals, you can have goals or a job, make you have a job. And my friend Olivia Torres, her poster is about, if you skip school, it's like skipping an amazing opportunity. Stay in school.
Very good.
So these are only a few posters, but on Friday, September the 17th, we will have more posters available here in the cafeteria. We will have our Honorable Chief Judge Gil McBride to come and share with our students. Also, I want to say thank you Mr. Colfield, who has a class who's been moving this project. I want to also give a shout out to Mr. Williams, who is our art instructor, who's doing a magnificent job in making sure that we can do this. Many other high school students will be producing PSAs and also media blitz. So I want you to know that we are going to make sure that we get the word out that education is important, it's a law, and we will make sure that every child be very successful in what they do. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Floyd to come up and I'm going to say something about Mr. Floyd. As you know, Mr. Floyd has taken a position as magistrate judge and within the last year, he's jumped on board. He has provided PPE support for us. He is also school supplies for us and is doing a magnificent job. Whenever there's problems with kids not coming to school, we don't want to be very punitive. We want to be very proactive. And thank you Mr. Ellison for allowing that platform to take place. We are here to make sure that we fill the gaps, not be punitive, but fill the gaps. Because I want you to know that Chattahoochee County is about leading the way and that's exactly what I believe that we will continue to do. So thank you Dr. Brooks, thank you the board for allowing us to do what we do in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Echols, Mr. Floyd and students and then our wraparound service partners. We appreciate you. The last update for information only in terms of the superintendent's report is a reminder that the school calendar has now included some half-days. And these days are available so that students can schedule appointments with teachers for additional one-on-one help. Again, it's another strategy to reach our students in person, but also meet the needs of our virtual students. Those half-days, they've been posted on social media and on the website. But just as a reminder, those are September 17th, October 29th, and December the 3rd. So those are half-days. The high school will, middle school and high school will dismiss at 12 and the elementary school at 1. And this concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. All right, and we have a map for the assessment?
In terms of our assessments, the state has a requirement that the kindergarten students must be assessed annually with an assessment called G-Kids. As a charter system, we have waived the state rules and that gives us the opportunity and flexibility to determine some assessments that we administer. Kindergarten is an assessment grade level that the state allows us to replace assessments with. And at this time, I'd like to explain a little bit about the assessments we're doing in kindergarten. We cross the grade levels for kindergarten through 8th grade for the past year and a half have utilized MAP, the Measures of Academic Progress. It is a national assessment that tells you your strengths, weaknesses, and it gives you growth targets to meet throughout the school year. It's not grade-based, it's skill-based, and teachers use it to define their small group learning opportunities for students. Because we already use that to guide our instructional practices, the goal is to remove an additional test from kids where we don't over-test. And so the state will allow us to let G-Kids be replaced with MAP since we already give MAP. So I wanted to explain that, share that information, see if there's any questions. Because during our action agenda items, I would like to recommend that we replace the state test G-Kids with our local assessment that we've already been doing for the past year and a half.
So replacement with the MAP.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and then we have the annual training.
And each year, the Board of Education must attest to the state the number of training credits that they receive for the year. We're very pleased to share that this year, the Chattahoochee County Board of Education has once again exceeded the state requirement on their annual training plan. So congratulations on finishing your year of training and thank you for your commitment to that ongoing learning for shared governance. So congratulations and in our action items, we'll be developing another training plan for this new year.
So we don't have to do the other one that got rescheduled?
We can do it this new year.
Okay, gotcha.
Great. Good news.
Very good.
All right, and next is our favorite part, the recognition.
Yes. Now we will turn it over to our principals for our student and employee recognition. This is the best part of the board meetings. So we'll begin with Mr. Kemp and he will talk to us about 6th grade through 12th grade.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is nice to have, see our students and their families at a board meeting. Really, we were not able to do it much last year and then over the summer, of course, it's usually an empty house, but it is nice to see everyone. I want to just take a moment and say, how much I appreciate your kids. This is such a nice place to come to work every day. Because our kids are happy, they take care of each other, they look after each other. Not saying we're perfect, there's no perfect place on earth. But there is something special about this place because our kids do look after each other. And the teachers and our other staff members, they look after the kids as well. So I really appreciate you because your kids would not come up here and behave like that if it were not for how they're being raised by their parents. So I really appreciate it. So 6th grade, our 6th grade student of the month is Ms. Audra Ganey. Come on down. Audra has moved to transition to chat code. She is always prepared for classes. She works hard both in school and at home. And she is kind to students in the classrooms and the hallways. She does a great job to make sure everyone is included. Thank you. 7th grade, student of the month is Ms. Liberty Maynard. Liberty is not afraid to go the extra mile to work hard at a task and recognizes that there's always room for improvement. Liberty is super smart, super sweet, and always willing to help out her fellow classmates. 8th grade is Mr. Lenoris Robinson. I don't believe Lenoris could make it tonight, but even though he's not here, I want to say, I've never seen the improvement in any child over, you know, the span of a couple of years as I've seen in Lenoris. It is truly amazing. His attitude, his work ethic, it really blows me away. And I'm super happy for Lenoris. He has really earned this. All right, 9th grade is Elijah Bennett. Elijah is always engaged and prepared for the assignment. Elijah is the type of student who is always on task. Not only is he on task, but he is ready to actively participate in class. He's always willing to help others once he's finished. Elijah has a positive attitude. I want to say this when he was leaving today. He said, even though I'm the principal since I coached for so long, people still call me coach. He said, "See you later, coach. See you tonight." And you can just feel the excitement and the attitude, so I can speak on that as well. So congratulations, buddy. All right, 10th grade is Ms. Amani Blue. Amani's teachers have noted on more than one occasion that she is ready and willing to help students in need. One teacher said that Amani has been instrumental in touring new students around the school during homeroom. Another teacher said that Amani is always helpful to other students in the classroom and she is positive and has a pleasant attitude. I would like to say also about Amani, one of the joys that I have as an educator is watching kids grow up and mature and start taking an active role in being a leader in the school in all the right ways. And I can specifically say I've And I can specifically say, I, I personally seen that out of Amani. She's such a blessing to have around, great attitude, and these are things that I, that I have witnessed. So, Amani, I appreciate it, and thank you. All right, eleventh grade is Mr. Devon Perry. I think Devon couldn't make it tonight. All right, and twelfth grade, our twelfth grade student of the month is Ms. Anisa Johnson. Anisa, this is what one of her teachers said. Anisa's a model student. She is thoughtful and kind. She has pushed her comforts on by exploring new Columbus Tech classes during her senior year, and she's excelling. I'm proud, I am proud to have Anisa in my classroom. You know, nine times out of ten, or probably more like ninety-nine times out of a hundred, our student of the month are, are recommended by teachers. I actually recommended Anisa this morning. And I did it because I was sitting here on lunch duty, and I saw some money fall, cash fall out of a student's pocket. Student had no idea. The student kept walking. Anisa saw it. She didn't say anything to anybody. She walked up and grabbed it, and then I watched her go find that student and give them the money. That's the kind of environment we want. That's the kind of kids that I want my children around. So I really appreciate it, and thank you, okay? So this is our sixth through twelfth grade students of the month. Thank y'all.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Heard, and I'm principal at the Chattahoochee County Education Center, the best elementary school in the state of Georgia. And I am so happy to share that we have had an amazing start to the school year, and that's highly evident with our students of the month. So without further ado, I'm going to start with our youngest student of the month, and he is from pre-K, Mr. Brody Jones. And Brody's teacher, Ms. Richards, had this to share about Brody. He is such a well-mannered little guy, so his parents should be very proud. He greets me every morning with a smile and is always on task and always gives one hundred percent. He is a great role model for his peers, and she can always depend on Brody to do the right thing. He is such a joy to teach. Congratulations, bro. And our kindergarten student of the month is Matthew Beasley. And I don't see Matthew in the audience tonight, but I do want to share what his teacher had to say about him. Matthew always follows directions and is always on task in class. He is always helping others. When a friend dropped his snack, he was the first one to help him clean up the mess without even being told. He's such a sweet, caring, and kind friend to everyone. So congratulations, Matthew. And our first grade student of the month is Leanna Kemp. She was very excited to know she was getting a medal tonight. She says she likes medals. And I know this is going to be the first of many for her. Her teacher had this to share about her. Leanna Kemp strives hard daily. When she began school this year, she was unable to write hardly anything. However, she has made such amazing progress in these few weeks of school. She was a virtual student last year that has taken my classroom by storm. Her handwriting and abilities are improving daily. She is always willing to help others and truly a joy to teach. Congratulations, Leanna. And our second grade student of the month is Kaden Gwad. And Kaden's teacher had this to say about him. He is very goal-driven and has started second grade with such a positive attitude. And one of the things that I would also like to share is that he shared with his dad that he was going to become an accelerated millionaire this year. And ever since he put that goal in his head, he has been one of our top AR readers, or our rock stars, as we like to call them, since the start of the school year. So I know that he's going to meet his goal. His teacher, Ms. Davis, says he takes pride in learning and everything that he does and always gives one hundred percent. So congratulations, Kaden. And our third grade student of the month is Caitlin Roberts. And although Caitlin is not here tonight, I do want to share what her teachers had to say. She's a very mild-mannered, sweet girl. She follows the class and school rules with ease. She completes her assignments, and at the end of the day, always tells me to have a great day and a great afternoon. She puts forward her best effort in everything that she does, and our class is amazing because she's a part of it. Congratulations, Caitlin. And our fourth grade student of the month is Caitlin Hall. And although Caitlin is not with us tonight, I do want to share what her teachers had to say. Caitlin always, is always on task. She follows directions and is ready to learn as soon as she walks in the door. She's always eager to answer questions and participate in our activities for the day. She is kind and goes out of her way to help anyone in need. Congratulations, Caitlin. And our fifth grade student of the month is Connor Camp. And I don't think Connor is with us tonight, but I'll share what his teachers have to say about him. This student has had an excellent attitude, always has. He has been very helpful and willing to participate in activities every single day. He is helpful to all of his peers and always sets a good example. He is also on our school safety patrol and does an excellent job assisting teachers and students when he's on duty. So congratulations, Connor. And these are our students of the month. And I would also like to share our employee of the month, and even though she's not with us tonight, I want to take this time to recognize Ms. Penny Whitwell. Ms. Penny is a veteran. Well, Ms. Penny is what all the students and staff call her because she's a veteran member of our CCEC staff. But Ms. Penny has done an amazing job. Ms. Penny is kind of a fish out of water, so to speak. She is in a temporary placement in one of our special education classrooms, but she's done such an amazing job in that classroom. She comes to school with, uh, every day with a positive attitude and is always willing to dive right in, no matter what the task is, with our students. That she always tries to motivate them to do their absolute very best. And I wish I could share with you, but I don't have a copy of it, but Ms. Penny even went the extra mile to write a special poem for her students that she served, and it is on display in the classroom. But I can't thank Ms. Penny enough for just having amazing attitude and jumping right in with this temporary placement. So congratulations to Ms. Penny Whitwell.
All right, thank you. All right, so now, um, we're about to move into our action items, so if we want to take just a couple of minutes. Um, I know, we, we would love for you to stay, um, but we do understand, especially at dinnertime, that some, um, need to, um, leave. But now would be that time. We'll take a couple of minutes, or you're welcome to take pictures. Um, but we'll get started with our action items in just a couple of minutes.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and supporting our schools. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Just let you start saying that. Just let you start saying. I was just thinking, I was like, I was like, okay, well, I talked to her like in person and this night.